Good evening. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, Council, to our May 24th, City of Gallatin Council Committee Meeting. Ms. Kitchell, would you call our roll call?
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilwoman Phan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchell. Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for May 10th, 2022.
Most approved.
Again.
There's a motion by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Alexander. We'll now move on to public recognition.
I'm sorry.
Does everybody have any changes with the minutes? Any additions, deletions? All in approval?
Uh.
Anyone not? All right, motions. The minutes are approved as submitted. We will now move on to public recognition. If anyone would like to address the council, please come to the podium. We'd like your name, address, and you have five minutes to speak.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here and, um, let's say hello to all of you. My name is Sandra Droppin. I live at 1113 Pinehurst Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee, Eagle Creek Subdivision. And I am here on behalf of the Eagle Creek residents. I have a petition with several pages of resident signatures, and I have copies for all of y'all after, you know, after I present this information to you. I'm going to read it because it's a compilation from the residents who have voiced their concerns about a situation, and I don't want to leave anything out, so I'm just going to go down item by item and read it after I get my glasses on. On behalf of the residents of Eagle Creek Subdivision, a petition, this is a petition to stop any future plans to cause harms to pedestrians and homeowners from additional traffic flowing from Fairway Farms, Ryan Homes, onto Wedgewood Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. These are the issues and concerns regarding hundreds of additional cars cutting through from Fairway Farms. There are no sidewalks in Eagle Creek Subdivision. Mothers walk with babies and small children in strollers on the street. Children ride bikes on the street. Adults walk and ride bikes on the street. There are already speeding vehicles cutting through from Highway 25 down Putter Point to Wedgewood onto 109 to avoid the traffic light at 25 and 109. Wedgewood residents will not be able to safely back out of their driveway. It is already very dangerous to use the turning lane to enter Eagle Creek off of 109 onto Wedgewood. The speed limit is too high on 109 in the city limits. The construction of a bridge across the creek would cause drainage problems from Fairway Farms onto Wedgewood Drive. Fairway Farms already has access to Highway 25 as well as to Long Hollow and 386 by way of Windling Boulevard. They have two exits. There was already a ruling made over 15 years ago that there would not be any further cut-through made from Fairway Farms by the builder developer into Eagle Creek Subdivision. The sign that is posted on the Fairway Farms side reads as follows: Temporary dead-end road subject to extension by City of Gallatin at some future date. This is a clear indication that someone has future plans. I received a reply from Nick Tuttle's office on March 11th that said there are no plans for connection as of now. And that is not a definitive answer, and it does not say no plans whatsoever. If the sign is not making a true statement, then the sign needs to come down. If the sign is making a true statement, then someone is violating the trust of the residents of Eagle Creek Subdivision and the decision that was made by the planning commission 15 years ago. And there is another letter that one of the residents wrote, and one of the neighbors are going to read that for her because she's out of town tonight. Okay, now, we have many of y'all's copies of this. Picture of, you know, the sign, and, um, if y'all could just, those are the copies. And this is the original petition with the original signatures of the residents. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Brown, members of the City Council, my name is Loretta Prince. I live at 1110 Pinehurst Drive. I'm reading this letter from one of our residents that she wrote because she could not be here tonight. The letter goes, "My name is Susan Gammons-Fries. I apologize for not speaking to you in person. I am in Durham, North Carolina, for an appointment at Duke with my retinal specialist. Otherwise, I would be there delivering my concerns about connecting Wedgewood Drive and Eagle Creek and the neighborhood beside ours, Fairway Farms. My husband and I live at 1126 Wedgewood Drive at the end of the road. Our property is adjacent to the new addition in Fairway Farms. It is our understanding there are plans underway to connect our street to Fairway Farms. Our property is the closest one to this proposed connection. My husband and I have extreme concerns of connecting the roads as follows. Number one, traffic. It is obvious traffic will increase. Drivers from Fairway Farms will be cutting through to avoid the light at Highway 25 and 109 bypassed. Number two, flooding. Every time there's a hard rain, the small creek that is beside our house and continues to the golf course floods and water stands at the end of the road. Our property has a drainage ditch behind it that makes a 90-degree turn and flows into the creek. When there's a heavy rain, our backyard was standing water also. If the roads are adjacent, there will be more runoff and therefore more flooding. I spoke with the Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation, TDEC, several years ago about the creek and flooding. They informed me that the neighborhood is actually in a wetland and that according to today's regulations, the neighborhood could not be built there." Number three, walkers and bikers. We do not have sidewalks. There are numerous people in our neighborhood who walk, including young mothers pushing their babies, many elderly people, families, and people walking their dogs. Last but not least of our concerns, my personal concern, I am legally blind. I have a retinal degenerative eye disease and have a small amount of vision remaining. I visited Leader Dogs for the Blind in Michigan, April 25th through 29th, 2022. My purpose for going was to attend their extensive white cane orientation mobility training. Did you know that only 10% of the blind visually impaired people get out and are still active? 90% of those people stay home. Prior to the training, I did not get out much. I did not have the desire. However, I came home with determination and confidence to not let my blindness keep me from getting out and about. Since returning home, I have been walking two miles a day in our neighborhood. As mentioned previously, we do not have sidewalks. When I walk, I tap my cane against the curb with each swing, letting me know I'm at the edge of the road. Needless to say, increased traffic on our road is the last thing I need. It will be dangerous for me as well as others who enjoy getting out and walking or biking. This lady is amazing. She walks every day in our neighborhood.
Tell them by her letter.
We don't need any more traffic in our neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Joe DeBord, and I live at 10007 Hart Street here in Gallatin. And I rise tonight on behalf of everyone in our city who's seen the wonderful opportunity our president has of changing the way we do our business in our country. The main thing that we take out of it is the fact that last week, y'all started the budget process for our city. To be honest, I think it's a waste of time, and I'm going to tell you why. Because of the fact that we are getting hammered by fuel costs and costs that we cannot understand and cannot plan for, it's really beguessen by gosh as to how we get our jobs done. I want to appreciate, I appreciate everybody in the city and the work that they do on our behalf. The catch is, anything that has anything to do with petroleum product is going to go out the roof, and that has to do with pavement, that has to do with fuel costs.
I knew, I'm sorry, I failed to reset.
That's all right, we can roll along. And all this sort of thing, it really just blows your budget all to pieces. My only suggestion is that you're going to have to back off of some of those things that we have for like paving and stuff like that because we really do not have the money to do that because of the fact that the cost is going out the roof. Now, you guys, you guys got something to do there, but I'm just telling you, it looks sad from my standpoint. Now, there's another issue or two I'd like to run by you. Number one, in the fall, on the third Saturday, Friday and Saturday, there is to be a two-night tractor pull at Triple Creek Park. We are going to be working with the county with regard to being able to get some funding for help, have a two-night pull. This is going to be the end of the season for the tractor pulls of Kentucky Tractor Pulling Association. It's going to be a big deal. The Certoma Club is going to take this on and see what we can do with it. And maybe we have something come bad then too because of the fact of the same situation we talked before about fuel. But anyway, this is something that we would like to do, and one thing that your budget slows down is the fact that we wanted to get a set of old lights to put up over that piece of property that we utilize for the pulling track and also for the rodeo that's coming up next month. So this is what we were sort of shooting for. I would also suggest that that money for lights, as Mr. John talked about, is a good deal because when you put up those new halogen-style lights, it's going to be less, less drain on our budget because it's going to be more efficient, and if you go with a style that we have now, you won't have any problem with having overflow light over the whole neighborhood, and it keeps the light on the field that we need versus having it all over the neighborhood shining people's light in people's windows. So I'll leave that with you. Y'all have a good day, and thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman George.
Yes.
Could I ask Nick Tuttle a question? Nick, will you come here just one second, please? Nick, I called you about a year and a half ago about that sign that's out there that they're talking about, and we don't have any intentions of voting that street up. Is there any way we can take that sign down?
We can, if you ask us to.
I mean, I've been out there several times, you and I spoke about it, and I don't see any reason, I mean, we did vote years ago that we wouldn't go open that road up, so...
The reason for it to be there is in case the city does make a decision that it is in the best interest of the citizens, it's not a surprise. If you, if you, if this body, whoever, if you guys want me to take it down, we'll take it down.
I would like it coming down because I...
You personally take it down?
No.
Nick, I like, I mean, we're not going to go through there, so I'd love to see it taken down. This is, I mean, this has been going on for a couple of years now, and I've talked to a couple of people out there now for a year and a half, and, you know, I've assured them that this council that we're in presently now is not having any intention of going through there, and I don't see why it should stay up there, so, you know, it's no, there's no additional houses going in there or anything else, so I just wish you'd take it down. There's a cul-de-sac there on one side of it anyway, so I'd appreciate it.
Okay, no objections.
Ms. Susan, is that something we have to put in a formal motion or not?
I don't think it ever came through here that the council approved it, so I don't think you have to say that you have to take it down. I just ask if everyone is supportive of that.
Thank you, Nick, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
Good evening, all. Pascal Jevens, 1335 Long Island Park. Quick thing on the liquor license. I made a comment the first time that came in that, I'm sorry I have to put you on the spot, guys, but I would like to hear what the, our emergency services think of us expanding liquor license because we know, you know, recovering accident and road and all that stuff, so I haven't heard again from the chief of police and fire chief what they think, and I think that would be great to hear their comment or concern. Same on the liquor license, one of the council person said he had a conflict of interest, so he was recusing himself, but I don't think just a conflict of interest meet the requirement of the chapter, Sector 2.3, disclosure of personal interest by official with vote. I don't know, maybe you can enlighten us on that one, but I think in the charter, they say they must disclose why, so I don't think a conflict of interest is good enough. Question for legal. Thank you.
Public recognition is closed. Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, happy birthday, Mr. Fennell. It is his actual birthday today.
Happy, happy birthday.
We didn't bring cupcakes and cards, we failed.
We should see.
No. On the 26th, which will be Thursday night, Antique and Classic Cars Cruising continues over at the Civic Center. This Friday is the legislative wrap-up at the Hampton Inn, formerly, what was it called back in the day? What did we call it? Anyway, it's Good Morning Gallatin now, but it's the legislative update from, and this will be from the state since they're at the end of their session. The American Red Cross Blood Drive, I always remind you of those because if you're able to give blood, I know that it would be appreciated. That's going to be at the Civic Center on the 27th, also Friday, 11:00 AM until 4:00. The Gallatin Farmers Market, just a reminder, is open now. It runs 9:00 to 1:00 each Saturday. Also, this Saturday is the opening day for the Tommy Garrett Aquatics Facility. So it's Memorial Day weekend, and that's when the pools open, and so I know a lot of people are going to be excited about that. Also, Crestview Funeral Home is having their Memorial Day Weekend Event from 1:00 until 4:00 at Crestview. On the 30th, which is Memorial Day, there is the annual ceremony at the Sumner County Veterans Park. That begins at 11:00 AM. And then another blood drive is happening on the 2nd, again at the Civic Center, 11:00 to 4:00. And again, that Thursday evening is the cruising at the Civic Center. Starting on the 3rd, historic downtown Gallatin is endeavoring to do a Friday night event. It's actually the Merchants, I guess, but downtown Gallatin is helping organize it. So on Friday nights from 5:30 until 8:00 PM, the Merchants in downtown Gallatin are going to be open late, so encouraging people to do after, you know, late afternoon shopping, early evening, eat downtown, and do some shopping since everything will be open. Of course, 30 Thursday is beginning June 2, so that'll be a good thing for downtown, but just remember to shop local, and that's all.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to our agenda, and we want to take item number seven and move that up to item number four, if that's okay. Is there one?
No objection to that.
Any objections? Okay, we'll do that. Okay, we're going to start off at item number one, which is a dangerous building on 213 Jocelyn Avenue. Chuck Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, 213 Jocelyn Avenue can be removed from our dangerous building. It had electrical issues going on where the meter was inside the unit. It's been moved, repaired, and so we'd like to take them off the list.
Great. Okay, so we'll move on...
All of the repairs have been made, correct?
Is there anything else we need to do with that? Okay. Item number two, dangerous building at 215 South Boyers Avenue.
215 South Boyers, history. This building has been in front of you. If you want me to go through the entire package, I can. This building was posted on 2/28/2020. The letter was received on 2/13/2020. We met with the owner on 3/27/2020. On 10/19/21, this council gave him 30 days to pull a permit for repairs. On 1/4/2022, we give him 15 more days. An application was received to repair the building. An engineer's letter was sent in. Nothing, we have seen nothing. I'd like to ask you to move it forward to another showhouse hearing, please.
Second, when do we need to set it for?
The earliest that you can set it forward would be the next council meeting, June 7th. I guess you could also put it on June 21st. It has to be between 10 and 30 days.
June 21st, is that good, are you correct?
Yeah.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Hayes and second by Mr. Overton. All in favor?
Just one question. Oh, go ahead, both. I have a question. Ms. Stewart, did you say the owner did pull a permit?
No, sure. The owner applied for a permit, but never pulled a permit.
I missed my stitch, I'm sorry, okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Motion passes. Item number three, dangerous building at 614 Peach Valley Road.
Again, this Peach Valley Road was posted on 8/27/2020. The letter was sent on 8/23/21. Had no response. The lady showed up at the first hearing we had, and council deferred this action for 30 days on 10/19/21. We received a asbestos removal permit from the state. They'd been applied for. An application came in for a demo permit. We've heard nothing since that date. It exceeded the 180-day timeframe for that particular project. Again, I'd ask this one to move forward for another showhouse hearing.
Chuck, is this one that they were going to sell the property to Habitat?
That's correct.
Never, nothing's ever happened from that?
It's never happened.
Most have said it on the 21st as well for dangerous building.
We have a motion by Mr. Overton and second by Mr. Hayes. Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Ms. Hayes.
We're going to move on to item number seven on the agenda, which is the Resolution Number R2206-45, amending adopting the City of Gallatin's new pay plan. Ms. Flood.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're here to discuss the pay city for, the pay study for our city. For those employees who don't remember, the City of Gallatin selected Burris Thompson Associates for the pay study. So anybody at home that's watching, just kind of do that as a reminder. The City of Gallatin pay study benchmarks are the following, and that's 19 public sector The present findings and recommendations are going to be presented tonight by Stephen He has 30 years of practical and consulting experience, and I'd like to bring Steve up to the podium to share his findings and recommendations with you all.
Glad to be here tonight. A lot of information I like to present, and we do this a lot, and I'm sometimes torn between giving not enough information and too much, so hopefully I can strike a good balance here. I would encourage you to ask questions as we go along. It's probably the best way to handle this, and I'll try to go as, I sometimes get accused of talking too fast, so I'll try to speak slowly and try to make sure I'm conveying the information so that you can understand it, but please ask questions if you have any. So as I understand it, you have in your packet this report labeled Classification and Compensation Study. I'm just going to go through and hit the highlights, describe our methodology, and talk about what we found when we completed the study. The approach we take is pretty much a market-driven one in that jobs, in our estimation, are valued how they're, how they're valued in the marketplace. So we compile salary information, and Connie alluded to the fact that we have public sector benchmarks selected. We also have a set of private sector benchmarks. Before we got into that, we had to make sure we understood all the jobs. That's the key in a, in a, in a market-based approach, is you have to have a solid understanding of the jobs. So when you compare the jobs, City of Gallatin jobs, to jobs in our databases, the public sector one, the benchmarks that were just shared with you, and our private sector database as well, we want to make sure we're making apples and apples comparisons as best we can. So to that end, we had Connie forwarded to us all job descriptions that were in the system for all of the jobs. In addition to that, we met individually with each department head, had their organization chart, and had them kind of go through their organization chart, talking about each job and how the jobs interacted and how work flowed through their department, that sort of thing, trying to make sure we understood what each of the jobs was about. We talked a bit, in some cases, about qualifications, desire to incumbents in those positions, information that we thought would be helpful to us to make these benchmark comparisons to the, to the data. After we met with the department heads, we compiled our data. If you look at page two on that report there, you can see at the bottom there the benchmarks that were just on the screen here. These are the public sector benchmarks. They were chosen because they're close by direct labor market competitors because of proximity. Some around here a little bit further away that seem to be good benchmarks in terms of demographics, other features of the City of Gallatin that would allow good comparison to some other jurisdictions. So that was the set of benchmarks that were selected with the help of the city. As I mentioned, we also have a general business and industry database. Most jobs for the city, if you have somebody that leaves, it's just as likely that they're going to go to a manufacturer, contractor, financial institution, restaurant, retail, warehouse distribution, you know, they could go anywhere. So we feel it's important to get information from the private sector as well to, to... So we feel it's important to get information from the private sector as well to gauge where the market is. So we have a database that has 4,000 job titles in it. It's updated quarterly. It's a pretty well-respected database. We can actually hone in on the Sumner County area, so we use that for the general business and industry benchmarks. All data were projected to July 1, 2022, which is a fairly conservative compensation planning date. I have some clients that would project to July 1, 2023, which would be pretty aggressive. You could do January, which would be kind of in between, but we chose July 1 as a fairly conservative compensation planning date. So all data were projected to that date. Talked to the mayor and HR and determined that the city wants to compete at the market average. Do you have some clients that target above average? I have some clients that purposely target below average, but by definition, of course, most target the average, and that may, seems to make sense for Gallatin. So that's what we did. We pulled the market average for each job from each of these two databases. We calculated a market rate for the job. It's merely, as mentioned there in point number five, in the middle of page three, the market rate for the job is merely the average of the median pay rate from the public sector benchmarks and the median pay rate from the private, the general business and industry database. So for most jobs, we had two numbers, private sector number, public sector number, averaged those two together, and that became the market rate for the job. The only exception to that is certified fire in place. Those jobs are not in the general business and employer, general business and industry database, so in the case of those positions, certified fire in place, we just have the one number, the public sector number, from those 19 public sector benchmarks. It's important to remember that this market rate is for the job, not necessarily the person. Typically, that market average, so to speak, represents probably somebody with five to seven years of tenure in the position out in the market. So it's important to remember that, that's kind of an average for the position and represents somebody with five to seven years of tenure typically. Any questions to any of this so far? In the middle of page three, we also were asked to compile benefits, compare to the benefits information. We're not gonna talk about that tonight, but we did, we have done that and delivered a preliminary report to Connie and HR, and we'll continue to fine-tune that, present that at a later date. As far as comparison to the labor market for wages and salaries, findings on the bottom of page three. One of the challenges we have in assessing the pay scales, so we need to do two things. We want to assess your pay scales, the pay steps that guide administration of pay. If those aren't set up to be competitive, then you're gonna have trouble actually administering pay in a competitive manner, and we're also going to pay actual salaries to the market too. But first thing we do is compare the actual pay structure, if you will, the pay steps, to see how they compare to the marketplace. One challenge we had was, well, we've got 18 pay steps. Which one do we compare to the market? It wasn't entirely obvious, and sometimes when consultants put these plans together, they would designate, we did this, we designate one of the steps as the market step. That's the step we anchored to the market. It wasn't clear which step that was intended to be for the 18-step Gallatin pay plan, so we chose step seven. I mentioned five to seven years, that's kind of the average tenure of somebody who's at the market average, so we chose step seven as the comparison point for how we would compare City of Gallatin pay steps to the market data. So we calculated a, an index, if you will, for each job, we took the step seven for their, for their position, and divided it by the market average, the market rate for the job, and came up with an index. Now, obviously, if that turns out to be 100%, that would suggest your step sevens are right at market, but in point of fact, that was not the case. The step sevens were quite a bit below, about 92% of market overall. Now, this varies by department, by job. About half of these indexes were between 87%, so the step seven was at 87% of market for the job, pretty low. So half were between 87 and 98%. So most, you could say, most of the step sevens were somewhat below, to quite a bit below, market. So that suggests we need to somehow adjust the pay steps to make sure that they're more competitive, so that they can guide administration of pay and lead you to a more competitive position in the long run. So we'll talk about how we did that in a minute. Next, we did compare current employees' salaries to the market averages, too, for each job, and you'll see in point B there on the top of page four, that overall salaries, actual employees' salaries, were at 94% of the July 1, 2022 market average for the job. Again, this varies quite a bit by job. Half of the employees were between 86% of the market average and 101%. So that means 25% of employees were below 86% of the market for their job, and another 25% were above 101% of the market for their job. I guess I'll only, so I get questions, well, what does that mean? Where should it be? Typically, we like to see this somewhere between 90 and 100, so you're not too far off, but you do have a fair number of jobs for which the pay scales, if you were, if you will, are way too far below the market, so starting rates of pay are pretty non-competitive, probably. So we generally say anything with salaries less than 85% of market are probably not too competitive, and you can see we've got almost 25% of employees in that category. So, recommendations. So the first thing we mentioned, we look at the jobs and the pay grades they're assigned to. If the structure index was really low, we cut up, set a cutoff of 89%. So if the step seven was less than 89% of market, we suggested we need to move that job up a grade, or in some cases, more than one grade. That would, hopefully, over the long run, even after we adjust the pay scales a little bit, would align the step seven with the market. So that's the first thing we did. We looked at jobs that the steps were, in essence, way too low, and moved them up a grade or two. Don't need to worry too much about all the numbers, just move them up a grade or two. All right. Then the next thing, once we get all the jobs in the right pay grades, we have to look at the pay steps themselves, the pay structure, what do we do with that? So we mentioned that the pay steps, in general, were below market, so what we decided to do was, and with the help of the city, we decided to do a couple things. One, let's eliminate the first two steps, which for many jobs were way too low, so we took the 18-step pay plan, knocked off the first two steps. Then we designated step five to be the market step. So we, so in order to get all the step fives to closely match the market averages for the jobs, we needed to move the pay structure, all the steps, about 5%. So to repeat, we took steps one and two, threw them away, moved the remaining steps 5%, and that would align step five with the market averages for the jobs overall. The other thing that we had had, some feedback that were, there were too many steps, so by getting rid of the first two, we got rid of some, but we also felt it would be appropriate, given the shift in how we shifted the steps, to eliminate the top three steps, so we end up with a 13-step pay plan, with step five being the nominal market step for each pay grade. Threw out a lot of numbers. Is it, any questions on what we did there?
I'm confused in a couple of things.
Okay, okay.
So you're eliminating one and two, so we're starting out at three?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We'll renumber it, we'll renumber it, of course, but yeah, we'll start at three. That'll be the new step one.
Right, and we have 13 steps?
Yes.
In every, every pay category?
Steps remain the same, they're 2.5% steps, that would not change, but...
The pay structure in government is quite the learning curve, and I'm sure that, you know, for those of you who are looking at this for the first time, you're going, what on earth is this chaos? But it is the structure that so many governments lean on. I think you mostly know that I'm a big proponent of merit pay, but until we get to the level that we're all comfortable with that, that's not going to be our course forward. But, you know, we have gone through multiple iterations of this, trying to close that gap so that we can be as between 95 and 105% as we possibly can, and I think we're at a really good place. I think we're...
So the 95% doesn't mean that's merit to 105, that's not merit, that's just...
That is how the job falls in comparison to the market, and there, it is not an exact, I mean, it depends on who you're comparing to. It depends on how the job compares to jobs in other markets. You know, we have some jobs that aren't exactly what other jobs in other markets are, so it's not an exact science. You know, what I looked at when we, you know, finally got to this iteration, actually, with each iteration I looked at, was where the outliers were, you know, did we have people way out of market on the high side, did we have people way out of market on the low side? And I think this is probably at the end of your proposal, but I mean, at the end of your pitch here, but I think it's important for this council to know. You'll remember in October, we did the four-step increase for probably half of our employees, so all of this is based on top of that. So when we are looking at, you know, what this does in the future, none of that is going away. So everybody's going to maintain that four-step increase that received that. Remember that when we talk about job market competition, that the greatest competition that we've seen in the market, and you know this from driving down the road and seeing the signs, is for the lower-wage employees. And so, you know, that's the area that I have felt so important to address so that we can attract and retain. Our higher-wage positions have not been a challenge. Well, I shouldn't say that. In some of the highly technical areas where it's very competitive, certainly it is, but for a lot of the ones that are higher wage, not the highest, but the higher wage, we have, and I'll use admins as an example, we have plenty of applicants, 100 or more every time there's one open. And some of these jobs that, you know, some of our other departments have, they can advertise and have no applicants, because it's, you know, there's so much demand for that, that level of skill and that level of wage in the market. So I know it's confusing to look at it. I'm happy to sit down with you at some part, point, and any of you who haven't been exposed to this in the past, and kind of explain how it works and what the, with, how the utility applies, and then the philosophy behind it, so, because it is...
So our findings are that we have more on the lower end than we do on the higher end?
Yes, yeah, that's an accurate statement. And to piggyback on what the mayor said, in many of the department head meetings, and we're finding this wherever we go, actually, that most of the pressure is on the lower-wage owner, trying to get applicants, hiring those people and retaining them. CDL requirements are being increased, so cities and counties are, how are we gonna train these people, and how are we gonna pay them, and so that's a big one. Sanitation drivers, heavy equipment operators, groundskeepers, those are especially tough. Police, I have a son who's a detective in City of Franklin, so I kind of hear some of the inside scoop on recruiting challenges, but, you know, they used to have advertised for a police officer, we'd get 250 applicants. Now they get 40, and half of those you can throw out right off the bat, so they're down to 20. You know, it's tough. And then, same thing in the certified fire side, once you have firefighters that are certified and become engineers, or, you know, it's, retention of those people is tough too. So, so I, so that's, again, going back to why we eliminated the steps one and two, there was just too much pressure on the bottom end of the pay structure. It wasn't competitive enough, so by eliminating that, making step five now our nominal market step, we're bringing in people closer to that market average, so they should be able to progress to that market average in a reasonable period of time, now, you know, about five years, as opposed to what it took before. So that's, that's an improvement. Any other questions?
I just have one question.
Yes.
How does the population of an entity affect the pay scale?
So, for most jobs, it doesn't. So, you know, so let's take the case of a police officer, secretary, co-inspector. You know, if you have more people in the city, greater population, you'll deal with that by hiring more of those, more police officers, more co-inspectors, more secretary, whatever. Now, where it does impact is at the top end. The department head level and maybe the second level down, those jobs, the complexity of those jobs is fairly highly correlated with population. In fact, I did that comparison here. So for department heads, the market average is not really the average of this group, it's an average that is statistically adjusted, I don't want to go into explanation of that, but statistically adjusted for population. So we plug in the City of Gallatin's population and the predicted salary based on this set of benchmarks for that set of, for that population is what comes out. So that's what I use for, for most of the department heads, where that relationship was pretty strong.
Anything that's correlated with responsibility is somewhat related to population. I think the impact that you see greater, and it often coincides with larger cities, is the cost of living. So, you know, the cost of living in any market and any job is gonna dictate what people need to, you know, live there or be attracted to that area, so that's certainly a lot of what we've seen in this area. And workforce shortage, you know, workforce shortage is probably our greatest pressure.
Any other questions related to the steps, the pay structure, or how we adjusted it? Okay, so that's a nice segue into item number C on the bottom of page four, where we're talking about proposed salary increases, and I have some verbiage down here that I talk about. I've heard some city administrators, managers, HR people call it the Wild, Wild West right now in the middle Tennessee area. So we've got kind of a double whammy going on here. First of all, we already talked about the difficulties in attracting, retaining qualified people, especially for some of the lower-level positions, but, you know, it kind of permeates almost all levels, you know, to a certain extent. It's just a very, very competitive labor market in middle Tennessee because of all the development and people moving in and, you know, all the stuff that's going on around here. That's not a, not a mystery. So in addition to that, of course, we have this whole cost of living thing that's kind of sprung out of nowhere over the last couple of years. So employers are really scrambling to try to figure out how to respond to those, those two factors, and we're seeing much larger pay increase budgets being talked about. We're doing the same session, my cohort in Franklin, Tennessee, tonight. We were, you know, we were in several places last week, you know, everybody's doing this. So it's kind of a moving target, which makes it especially troublesome or kind of challenging. I guess, you know, push to, push to declare, what do I, you know, look at my crystal ball, what do I see? Probably 6% to 8% average pay increase budget is what we're looking at in middle Tennessee right now. So it's, in prior years, we were saw, we saw three, 2.5, three, maybe three and a half, so it's really shot up in response to, I think largely, the labor market. We can't attract and retain people, but also exacerbated by the cost of living situation. So that's what we're seeing out there. Some of this, we have, we were able to get in the data because we had fresh data available, but when I talked about projecting all the data to July 1, 2022, we used our knowledge of what's going on out there to try to help us figure out how to project that data forward. So, so a recommendation in terms of pay increases summarized on page five there, there are three bullet points, basically. So for the 199 employees whose pay would fall below the proposed step one of the new pay scale, they would need an average of $3,900 to get to step one. That's just to get to step one. There's 199 employees in that, in that situation. So that's the first thing we need to do. Secondly, all employees in their positions before July 1, 2021 would move two steps, so it should be a 5% basically an increase. And then all employees in their positions after July 1, 2021, but before April 1, 2022, would move one step.
That's if determined warranted by the department head, because there are some instances where a department head is gonna feel that an employee needs to be somewhere else, and that needs to be their discretion.
So we talked to several department heads about those kinds of situations, yeah... Yeah, if you have some question about an individual, might make sense to withhold an increase until you get that rectified. And there were just a handful of these throughout the city. So, but, but it's important to take, to make sure that we proceed appropriately with those. So these pay adjustments, along with the ten percent, basically, the four-step movement that a lot of your lower-end, lower-level employees received in, in October, I guess it was. So, so this, together with that, this should position y'all pretty well moving forward to be, to be competitive. And, and, you know, it's, it's, like I say, it's kind of a moving target, so I'm urging my clients to pay attention of what goes on in the next year. Regardless, we tell our employers that they should monitor the market and adjust the pay scales, in this case, pay steps. Should probably be adjusted every other year. I've got some clients that adjust them every year, but you might want to take a look at those. Don't need to hire us to do a big fancy study, but somehow make an assessment of the market, how your pay steps are tracking in the marketplace and, and adjust them accordingly. That should happen every once in a while. Some of our clients ask us to help, help with that process. So we're, none of this is set in concrete. We're still working with some of the department heads to kind of fine-tune some things. You know, people leave, people get hired, some jobs get created when a person leaves, we combine this and that. So things are always being fine-tuned up until implementation and we're, we're involved in that process. So we're still working with department heads on some of these things to make sure everybody's comfortable. So we, we have shared the preliminary pay adjustments, pay grade assignments with all department heads individually, got their feedback. We've made a fair number of changes based on that feedback. Typically what happens is we fail to understand one hundred percent what a job is all about, and so talk to department heads, Steve, this job seems too high or too low. Okay, I said, well, tell me why. And we look at the job information and maybe, okay, we, it's not what we matched it to, we need to match it to these jobs in our databases. We do that, and then often we'll move the job up or down accordingly. Once in a while, we'll push back and say, no, the data pretty clearly say this job needs to belong here. So once in a while, we, we kind of hold the line, if you will. But it's important, I think, for, for department heads to be comfortable. It's, this is not our plan. It's basically the city's plan and their plan to help them get work done through their people. So I feel if, if they're not comfortable, we have failed. And so I take every effort possible to make sure that all the department heads are comfortable and we got things lined up the way they think that makes sense. That being said, any, any other questions?
Couple of things I'd like to add, just for the information, both of this council and our employees who know or interested. We are, the reason, the reason it's not set in stone now is we've just gotten so pushed down to the deadline because, like he said, he's working for multiple cities and we've gone through several iterations trying to get it right, and we've still got, I think, one more to go, but he's going to make some, he's going to look at some things that we found with the last one that we got, which was yesterday. And then our HR director is going to sit down with the department heads because they have only seen this. They have not studied it, they have not spent a ton of time with it, and so we want them to do that. And then there may be more requests of you. Our council meeting is not until the week after next because next week is the fifth Tuesday, right? And so what I would like to do, if this council is comfortable, is, you know, to move this forward, get to the place where we think we're okay with everything, have Rachel put it in the budget so that when you vote on the budget for the second time, it will be in there in the right department. Right now, we just have a lump sum in there. That lump sum that's in there does allow for this. It's, his, this is really the largest iteration that was proposed to us, but it's one point seven something. It's in there. We are working to get, make sure that the steps, if we want to do step increases this year, rather than waiting until the, we hadn't even discussed that with you, but waiting until the twenty-three, twenty-four, we do it in twenty-two, twenty-three. So if we can get the steps in this year, we want to do that as well. And we want to make it effective with the first pay period after the new fiscal year, which would be July three. And so there's going to be, with that, a lot of budget amendments that have to come to get the money programmed into the right department to extend the temporary pay that we started in October. We said that would end on July one, but we would extend it to July three, and then we'd be ready to go with it. And another thing that I think I want you all to know is that almost all employees are realizing an increase. There are a very, very few who have topped out and are way beyond market average that are not realizing an increase, and we are contemplating how to best address that. Right now, our thought is that we would do a bonus of two point five percent, it'd be spread over the year. And the thought would be is that that would perpetuate, even though they're topped out, that would perpetuate if the code were done the following year. And if not, they're, they're still going to be very high-wage employees and way beyond the market average. So, you know, I, I told the department heads today, sometimes it's hard for people to understand when they've been in a position a really long time, that there is a worth associated with a position. You know, just because you, you know, are in the same role forever does not mean that you are more valuable. In some instances, yes, in others, not so much. And so that's where we are. Anything, have I triggered anything with you that you want?
I guess the only thing I mentioned, I, I noticed somebody scrolling through or they had to hand out, the attachments that look like this, the attachment one and attachment two, that's, again, not set in stone, but that is the job table, I call it, has the market data for each job, shows the comparison to the step seven, that index, and then you don't see the thirteen pay steps, you just see steps one and three because we want to be able to read this thing. And, but this is how the jobs are arrayed currently by pay grade and by department. Again, that's just for your perusal and, but again, this is not set in concrete, we're still working on that. I think we're pretty darn close.
Really, really close.
Department heads have seen this once and most of, you know, had a couple of suggestions, some didn't have any suggestions, they were, they were comfortable with the way it was. So I think we're really, really close, but, you know, there's still room for a couple adjustments here and there, probably.
Of course, we want to get it exactly right because we do not want any scenarios in which a department head tells employee, this is going to be your increase. And they aren't in the right staff, or they are, you know, basing something on a previous position. Because this is, you know, this, this is important to get it right for the employees to have the correct expectations and, and certainly feel like this study helps them be compensated fairly by the city of Gallatin. And I, and I think while we're not looking at the benefits study at this point, I do think it's important to remind you, too, that Gallatin does have a very good benefits package. You know, we pay our employees health insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, we match nine percent on their retirement, we've added two holidays just this year, so that's a good thing. So there, there are other benefits to being an employee with the city of Gallatin. Also, working in government is viewed as a very, very stable employment, whereas in the private sector, not so much.
So Mary, your recommendation is we put this off to the next committee meeting before the June council meeting, is that correct?
No, I think it, I, I'm hoping that you will move it ahead to the council meeting, and at that point, we won't have any adjustments, and then you'll be ready to vote with it so that you can vote on second reading of the budget.
One moment, please, if we could. I've just handed out a resolution in a department head meeting today. The finance director requested that we add something that would extend the resolution for the four steps. That was not in the original resolution that was forwarded to me. And so the resolution that I've just handed out does have that we extend resolution R twenty-one, ten, dash seventy-three until July third, twenty-two, and makes the effective date of the resolution July third, twenty twenty-two. And I'd like to ask that if you're going to move it on, that you move this resolution on in this format so we don't have to amend it at the council meeting.
I mean, is this like an amendment or is this a separate issue?
This is the resolution, John D. Swisher.
Resolution.
The resolution. It says the extension of the temporary benefits. Remember that I mentioned a few minutes ago?
Yeah.
That's included in this resolution.
So when we put the pay plan together and plugged salaries in, we included the four extra steps as their rate of pay. We did try around with taking a one or two away, but that didn't make sense, so.
I guess my question is, Mayor, will we get this before we vote on it, or is this going to be on the council meeting, they're going to hand it to us when we vote on it? I'm just asking, will we see ahead of time what we're voting on? That's why I asked, will it come back to committee meeting first?
You should have time to have it in the packet, right, Ms. Flood? Yeah, she'll be meeting with department heads next week. If something happens and you're not, if we're not able to get everything wrapped up, you can.
Put it off.
You can put it off.
I, I mean, I just want to see what I'm voting on, so.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, the motion is. Mr. Alexander had a question.
Yeah, I mean, all this together, I guess what I'm asking, this is.
This is, this is the resolution that I just handed out that has the extension of the resolution that had the four steps until July third, twenty twenty-two. When we enacted that resolution, it was through June thirtieth because that's the end of our fiscal year. So we need to extend it just a few days so that people aren't losing pay, the people who got the four steps aren't going to lose pay. And then we are making this resolution effective July third because that begins a new pay period. Is that correct? Yes.
I'll second that motion for, right now.
We have an original motion from Mr. Finell, second by Mr. Overton. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you, I appreciate y'all, because we cannot pass a budget until this is programmed appropriately. Oh, I guess we could, but then we'd have to amend it and all that.
Thank you.
Anything else you have?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Down to Gallatin now. Thank you, sir. Your patience with Ms. Flood and Ms. Nichols and I.
Okay, well, then, moving on to ordinance number zero, two-two, zero-five, dash two-eight, amending the Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter Nine, Fire Protection and Prevention, Section nine, dash sixty-one, by amending the number of residential dwelling units in a development that will require two separate fire apparatus access roads. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you again, counsel. This is a, an error that we had made in the ordinance, Section nine, dash sixty-one, in which we listed Section D, one and two-family residential developments to read, developments of one and two-family dwellings where the number of dwellings exceeds fifty shall be provided with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads and meet the requirements for Section D one, zero, four point three. Should have said, according, in accordance with the International Fire Code that we adopted, one and two-family dwellings, residential developments of one and two-family dwellings where the number of dwellings in units exceeds thirty shall be provided with two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads. It was a misprint on our part, we're continually going through these codes and we just caught it. So we'd like to amend the ordinance to read thirty or more. We have two access roads.
Motion to send it off.
Motion by Mr. Hayes, do we have a second?
I'll second it. My question is, Chuck, is there some out there now that doesn't make the cut?
Yes, there are. But if you read on to the exceptions it has in the fire code here, it says the number of dwellings for a single apparatus shall not be increased unless fire apparatus access roads will connect with future developments.
Okay.
So that saved us on that mistake we made there because those roads are going to be future, they're adding.
That was going to be my next question, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Any opposed? What's that? Item number five, amended ordinance zero, two-two, zero-five, dash twenty, amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter Three, Alcoholic Beverages. Ms. McCauley?
Yes, so just for some housekeeping matters, last week you made an amendment to delete the population limits and asked that Section three, dash fifty-four, C and D be deleted. So what is in your packet has those sections deleted. In doing a little further, dug a little deeper this week, and it looks like three, dash fifty-five A needs to be amended. We have the maps that are ready, Lori. We, we had some maps, I think, were handed out to you, and before you look at the maps, let me, let me get to this amendment. As GIS was drafting these maps for us, they were in conversation with Mr. McCord about the different zonings that would allow, and the GIS person found out that we currently have some liquor store, retail liquor stores that are in MRO with a PUD that allows retail sale. And so I do think that three, dash fifty-five A needs to be amended to include language after the MUL district that would read multiple residential and office MRO district with a PUD that previously approved retail sale. That's something that's not going to happen in the future, but if it's already existing out there and it's already approved, we need to include that. So that's something that we need to probably amend at our meeting next week, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. You also discussed the distance limitations in Section three, dash fifty-five B, and that's why I have some maps for you. So you talked last week about a one-mile radius between stores. Currently, we have, it's fifteen hundred feet, and it's the shortest route of pedestrian traffic. When you get into longer distance, like a mile or any, any other distance, what I've seen cities say is to say the distance will be measured along the shortest drivable route from the center of the main entrance to the center of the main entrance. And that's what this very first map is going to show you. So I don't know if you can, how well you can see it, but for each of the, the colors that are shown, that, somewhere in there is the current liquor store, and there's a, there's a small star, for those of you that had them handed out, that shows our current seven liquor stores. And then the shaded area is kind of, it's the one-mile distance limitation. The bright yellow area all over the map, not if it's within the shaded area, but the bright yellow areas outside of the shaded areas, those are current zonings outside of one mile where a liquor store would be allowed. And of course, once one is allowed, then you're going to have a one-mile limitation from that liquor store as well, if that's what this council wants to go with. Show the next map, Lori. This is an, shows a little bit better the one mile where it's not just the shade of it. This is, this is not a drivable route, this is a one-mile aerial distance from the liquor stores, and it just kind of still shows you, the purple shows the one-mile radius, and then the bright yellow are the current zonings that would allow a liquor store that's outside of the one-mile route.
Are they currently a mile away from each other?
They are not. There are, this would be grandfathered in, we can't, we couldn't do anything with those.
Several overlap.
If you look at this map, it shows the aerial, you can see that some of them overlap, but we could not do anything about where they are currently located. This is just for, for future.
So the distance for schools and churches would still remain the same?
Well, we, remember, we took that out. We just, we took that out because it's hard to define what a church is, and so it currently just reads that it can't cause congestion, there can't be congestion of traffic near a school or church. That was something that was changed before.
Question?
Yes.
And I like the mileage thing. Another thing I brought up, I guess a couple of weeks ago, or last, one, a couple of weeks ago, whenever it was, last week, but about the financial, you know, making it a little bit stricter in our guidelines.
Okay. Can we do this first? Can we discuss what y'all want to do with this first to know what I want to do, and then I will.
Yeah, yeah.
Go on to that. Do y'all have any questions or suggestions? Is this the way you want it? Do you want something different?
Is anybody okay with the mile?
Again, Jim.
Is anybody okay with the mile in distance?
I'm not.
How, how far you want?
Let me make it clear, I'm not looking for a liquor license, okay? I don't need any more employees. And somebody called me and told me some idiot put on Facebook that I was wanting a liquor license.
They did.
And. And that's the last thing I want right now. But to me, it goes back to what I said before, it's protectionism and a mile. We need, you know, the population's going to change as this goes by. If you've got 30,000 people in a half-mile square, square area, and that's just an example, it may require two liquor stores. I don't think it's going to happen. I think it's unlikely. But I think when we put a limit on the mileage, that we're going to push some things out that we don't want pushed out in the future.
Always.
You can always change it.
You can amend it.
Always amend it.
I just did this based on your conversation, councils. I understand, understand your point of view.
I mean, it's going back to protecting the people that's got, you know, he's got one well. He's got 10,000 people in this area, but this guy here, he don't have that.
But I think it's new, it's kind of taking away the population, one for every whatever thousand it is right now. You know, and it's kind of putting it within a mile. And if you look at this map, I mean, you know, you're kind of congested in some areas. And then, you know, you, you've got plenty of places to go within that mile.
Well, I, I agree with what Craig's saying. But the problem I've got with it is that it goes back. I think we're telling people how they're going to do business. And I don't think we're going to have an issue with too many liquor stores.
Right now, if we did this, only, they could only put a liquor store where these bright yellow places are.
That's correct.
Based on a mile?
Based on a mile, and you need to determine if you're going to do it the shortest drivable route. The second map shows a one-mile aerial, one-mile radius.
I thought we had said drivable last time. Yeah.
That's why I had the first map.
Drivable makes sense.
Yeah.
And that's the way I've seen most cities do it. So, how do we want to proceed? I just, I want direction.
Another example I'll use, correct me if I'm wrong, John D. said they may want one in his district over there at some point. That's going to eliminate his district.
But there is one in his district already.
You look at the two over there, and it will.
Well, I mean, you, you know, the store is going to go where the most population, the most business is.
Giving up a lot of opportunities for yellow with a mile, but still, I'm okay with, with anybody.
They've got opportunities. It addresses the area where people have expressed they feel like there's demand. And I think it does help limit it because, as I've said, I'm sick of, because nobody's listening. I, I, you know, I think it's, we, we passed it on 2014. We gave investors an idea that, you know, that this was going to be the new law of Gallatin. It was actually more restrictive than the previous one. And, you know, just these few years later, we're changing that. And I do not want, I mean, if, honestly, if, I felt like there was some way that, I don't think you could do it starting in this day's time, but because it existed, I think you take advantage of the opportunity to control it to some degree because Lebanon has 14 liquor stores. And I don't think people want to drive into a city and see liquor stores everywhere.
I don't think the people, I don't think the people in my district want to drive into our city and see 14 liquor stores either.
And I think a thing too, that, you know, you, you talk about, you know, population might grow. Well, look, look where most of the population's happening right now is in the West. I think there's, what, one liquor store in my district right now? You let that population increase, and if you don't put that mile limit there, we could have five or six on that side of town. So, I think that's why that mile probably does kind of help, you know. Takes away the population limit, but still, it takes away, you know, from having, you might have three, but you're not going to have six or seven. So, I kind of agree with that.
Got a motion, Craig?
But if we keep it with...
Can I ask my question? Are you through?
Yes.
The, the thing that I want to see us do, and, and I want to, yeah, I want to keep the mile. But I'm saying, I think Susan gave me a thing for Mount Juliet's ordinance. And I think, did you have another one from somebody too that you were going to pass out to everybody?
Yes.
What I would like to see us do is just, is kind of look at these ordinances, you know, and I don't know if you want to defer this to the next committee meeting instead of passing it on to the next city council. I'd like to see us do that because I want to see us come up with something and look at these ordinances and maybe even get another two that have more strict financial obligations in there for people that are wanting to obtain a liquor store.
So, what I'm handing out now, last...
I just want to, I mean, I think Smyrna has something totally different, I believe.
Yes, last week, there was discussion about Mount Juliet's ordinance. And I did receive that. It's not exactly as what was communicated to us. They did lift their three-store limit. They do still have a population limit. They have a three, three-mile radius limitation. And what was in a former iteration of their ordinance basically just was what the, what, what was provided to me anyway was what state law is. So, anyone that's applying for a retail liquor license has to go before the state board, the TABC, and they have to provide their financials to the state board. And that was what was in Mount Juliet's. At least, that's what was provided to me. It's not even in the ordinance that was passed, that was amended in January of this year. However, Smyrna, what, another city near us, does have a financial obligation. And I've handed that out to you. It's on, starts on the bottom of the page. It was highlighted. And if you want to read through that, there are limitations. I think they have to prove $100,000 net worth.
What I'm reading on that, Mount Juliet, they only, they only have three liquor stores.
No, they, they removed that. They deleted that. See, if you'll read it, they deleted that.
Susan? Susan?
Yes.
So, you put a dot right here, and then you went a mile circum...
I, I didn't do this. I'm not a GIS.
So, if somebody goes out here into this yellow right here, at what position are they going to do the circle? The circle just go in the middle right there and then over line again, so you won't be exactly a mile?
We're not doing that one.
Will you go back to the first map?
First map's the one we're doing.
The first map was a drivable distance. And one of our GIS texts was able to put in a drivable route from the entrance, as I understand, of the liquor store. And that's the shaded area. And then the yellow boxes is the zonings that would allow it, that are outside the one-mile drivable route.
But that's what I'd like to see us do. I'd like to see us defer that. But I'd like to see, you know, something like what Smyrna has. But, you know, to me, I think we need to help the net worth. And if we could come up with, I don't know, is there any more ordinances out there that have something like that?
I agree with Craig on that because that keeps somebody that, we'll just say, on the shady side.
Hendersonville has, the applicant must provide the amount of money invested or to be invested and the source of funds to be used. And if borrowed, the name of the person from whom borrowed, the name of the bank with which the applicant does business, and the name of the person who is aiding the venture financially, either by loan or guarantee. That's what, and that's all that we, now, we did not do an exhaustive search because we had a few other things we had to do this week. But we, with the search that we did of our nearby communities, we did find Smyrna and Hendersonville that had what you were requesting.
And can you, can you, like, by our next meeting or something, pass that one to us or, or get that to us or something from Hendersonville?
I can email it to you if you...
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, I got another question. How far, does this, is there a limit on how close they can be to a school or a church?
No, that was removed.
We're going to say that it can be 1,500 feet from a church or a school, but it's going to be a mile away from another liquor store.
Remember, that was part of the ordinance that we discussed changing because right, you know, in today's times, you can't always ascertain where a church or a school is. And some of them move a lot, and they're in strip malls and what have you. So, there's no way to control that. And so, it made sense to remove that. We discussed that prior.
But, you're by three.
And in Mount Juliet, they can be three mi, no closer than three miles apart.
Every city is different.
Yes, that, I mean, that's making a mile seem like it's not a big deal at all.
But I will tell you that most, so Hendersonville has a three-mile. Hendersonville must be located within 1,000 feet of Gallatin Road or within 1,000 feet of Indian Lake Road or within 3,000 feet of the intersection of Vietnam Veterans Boulevard at New Shackle Island Road or within 3,000 feet of the intersection of Vietnam Veterans Boulevard at Indian Lake Boulevard. That's what they have. Lebanon hasn't, they have no limitation, and they have no limitation on where they can be. Murfreesboro has 1,500 feet between stores. Franklin, it's 300 feet between stores. Smyrna is 500 feet between stores.
Now, is that Hendersonville's latest one because they just increased their population to like 18,000 per liquor store?
Did that pass? Last time I talked to their city attorney, that failed. So, I don't, the last, but that, it's been a while back. I don't, you know, I don't know.
Another thing, can you, can you, if you don't mind, email me those? And, and did Franklin have a financial?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, all right.
I think the only two that we found was Hendersonville's. And theirs is really just to give some financial information in Smyrna. And they have to
I like the...
Show proof of net worth of the applicant.
I like the mileage, and I'd like to see us make the financial a little bit more strict. So, I mean, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this to our next committee meeting and get some more information on it.
I second that.
And questions? I have one. Are we the only ones that have population restrictions as of right now?
Oh, no.
Oh.
No, no, no. Mount Juliet has one for 8,000. Hendersonville, I thought it was one for every 12,000. But they may have increased theirs. Lebanon doesn't have one. Murfreesboro has one for every 5,000. Franklin's one for every 3,000. And Smyrna just has a limitation on the number of stores, five stores. Every city is very different.
Any other questions? Okay, we have Councilman Hayes has motion that we were going to defer this to our next council meeting or planning?
Work session.
Okay. And second by Councilman Fenn. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving on. We're on item number six, which is continued discussion for ordinance number 02203-14, adopting Plan Gallatin, the City of Gallatin Comprehensive Plan. Matt Harris?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'd bring in Plan Gallatin back before you tonight. And I believe, Mr. McCord, do you have updated language? I think that was, that was the next piece of this, where some information on what they were asking for.
Bill McCord, City Planner, I've been developing some language. I need some feedback from the council as to what direction that we need to go. I think the issue is, for most of you at least, as discussed last time, is establishing a character area or evaluating, identifying a character area with conditions that should occur to allow a change in the character area on the south end of town, basically that area south of Nichols Lane, east of Lock 4 Road, and west of basically Woods Ferry Road down to the river, which is now designated as rural community. Back with the older comp plan that we had, it was mixed-use, walkable community, which promoted mixed-use development and a much higher intensity, intensity of development. The other area is, the mayor had brought up, is the area along Odom's Bend Road, which is also mostly designated for rural community. And the mayor would like to pursue a grander vision for that area, particularly the waterfront properties. I have some photographs of a project that was done in another town. It's much smaller, but a very ambitious project that I took some pictures of this weekend. If you'd like to look at those, it'd be great. We have a copy of the, some of the pertinent maps from our current comp plan and including the character area map, if you want to look at that. But I need some feedback on some specifics that you want us to tie the trigger, if you will, for implementing some of these land use changes or the character area changes. I can prepare something for you, but I'd really need some kind of direction.
Bill, the Odom's Bend corridor, I echo what Mayor Brown said. I think that we really need to pay attention to that area right there because that's our last bit of lakefront property that could be developed. And I want to make sure it's developed in the right...
Well, what Mr. McCord happened to see this weekend and showed with me is spot on with what we have discussed for a long, long time is what could be the possibilities there. I think he is really seeking how you think, I, I mean, I'm comfortable with he and I working that out. I think where he's really, aren't you, are you, Bill? Are you comfortable with you and I working out the Odom's Bend vision? Yeah. But with the Lock 4 area, he, I'm going to put words in your mouth, and you tell me if I'm wrong, okay? But I think where you're feeling like you need direction is he doesn't feel like the road that we mentioned with the connection would have to happen based on some development, but it needed to happen on all development. And so, how do you set those parameters to make it understandable for, you know, future development? To me, to me, when we're talking about the land use plan, it's about, you know, the, the, the character areas and what can be. Doesn't mean that we're not going to have requirements based on getting to any character area or, or any development that's happening. And that's kind of how I feel about it. But I do think that we, a lot of people had mentioned the importance of that Clear Lake Meadows connection. And then certainly with Odom's Bend, you know, the utility infrastructure's not there. But the expectation would be, you know, that any development, investment of the size that we're talking about would be putting utilities in. So, just because we say that's a character area vision, it doesn't mean that it can just happen without, you know, some restriction, you know, some improvements required by the city, et cetera. So, I, I do think that we do need to clear one thing up, and that is kind of how this progresses. And Ms. McCauley probably needs to brief this council so that we're all on the same page, that this is actually going to have to make its way back to Planning Commission for them to then recommend to us or recommend against these changes, and then we would vote.
Yes, I did want to, to interject, to make sure that everyone in this council understands. And I'm going to start off by saying, don't shoot the messenger. I'm telling you the law. And it's not my law, it's the state law. And so, what state law requires, really what it would authorize is, is for the Planning Commission to make recommendations to this body for this body to adopt. This body does not have the authority, the authority under the statute to make its own revisions to what the Planning Commission has made. So, you must send it back to the Planning Commission for the Planning Commission to make recommendations. You can send things back. They've already adopted it until you, as a legislative body, adopts it. It's really not the law of the land. It's more of, it's a guide for Planning Commission. But if you want to, and I think everyone has expressed that you do want to be able to adopt something, we've spent a lot of time on it, you have to send it back to the Planning Commission, and they have to approve it. And so, if you request something of the Planning Commission and they don't make that recommendation, when it comes back, you either accept their recommendation or you don't. You cannot make revisions to that plan. And that is in the state law. We have talked with MTAS. We actually talked with someone that helped draft this. And he thinks that there was a, an error made in the law when it was adopted. But I, we can't go by that. We have to go by the law as it was adopted by the legislature. And that is the way the law is written. And I want everyone to understand that.
Thank you. That's where we are.
Is that area over by Nichols Circle, is that on this map rural? I can't see this, can't see where the street names are. So, if, does it matter if it remains rural to, as far as to the future of this road?
Well, the quest, the request by this body was that it be changed. Well, the quest, the request by this body was that it be changed to something suburban. And they were saying that the Planning Commission had not put it suburban because they didn't want to see it go suburban without there being a connection established. And so that was kind of the disconnect. And now we're trying to navigate, how to navigate that.
So we have to bring this back into the, send it on to the, send it back to planning? So is that the motion we need to make?
We don't have to make a motion, you gotta go back, right?
Well, I think you need to give some direction to the Planning Commission of, of what you're, you're wanting. And I, I think that's what we're trying to do here. And then Planning Commission can recommend amendments. They can amend what they've adopted. And then they can send that back to this body.
And you also have, like, the, not typo, but the insensitive description that we would like to see changed, and then these two areas. That's the only thing that has been brought up to them at this point, so.
Yeah, I, I think from a Planning Commission standpoint, what would be productive would be, you know, clarity on the issues that the council would like Planning Commission to, to revisit. And then Planning Commission can, can come back with a recommendation for those changes and...
Would it be best to endeavor to have a joint meeting? Or do you think that that would be too complicated, too many people to...
I, I think because the, the issue, especially with the Lock Four Road area, was discussed at length at Planning Commission regarding the roadway connection that, and, and the infrastructure to be able to support growth in that area, I, I think the Planning Commission could take it amongst themselves.
Figure out the path.
Figure out the path, because that was, that was the driving factor for, for that, that, the rural designation out there. So I, I would say if it, let's get it back to Planning Commission with some guidance from, from this body. And if, if there's still some, if there's still some issues we need to work out that might be, then a, a joint session might be valuable. At this point, I think Planning Commission could take care of it.
Give them a stab at it.
Thanks, Mayor.
All right, you go.
Moving right along. Thank you. Okay, we're now on to, on to number eight. The ordinance number 02206-29, appropriating funds from 2021 Water Sewer Revenue Bond Issue Series 2021B in the amount of 15,000, 15 million, $4,257.16. Nichols.
As y'all can see from the next several items, we're doing some cleanup. We had a couple of ordinances with typos. And then, as we were preparing for year-end, it dawned on me that I never did appropriate the money when we borrowed additional funds for the water sewer fund in December, January, when we did that bond issue. So this ordinance is to appropriate the funds from that bond issue and get it on the books.
Motion, Senator.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Overton, second by Mr. Fennell. Any conversation? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? No. Thank you.
The next item is an ordinance to amend, ordinance 0, or O210953. It was the ordinance for our year-end carryover. At the top of the ordinance, it said the, all the changes totaled up to an amount of $3,345,831. The lines actually totaled $3,345,931. There's a $100 typo. So this is to correct that $100 typo.
Motion, Senator.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Any conversation? All in favor?
Uh.
Opposed? Motion, Harris.
Next one is to correct a typo on an account number. When it was being typed in, it had a subaccount of dash 20, and it should have read a subaccount of dash 30. It did not change any money. But again, cleaning up that old ordinance.
Motion, Senator.
Second.
By Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Hayes. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, Harris.
Next one, I actually had two typos in one ordinance, I apologize. Again, it was just an, an account number that was listed incorrectly. Nothing changes on the dollar amount for the fund or the project.
Senator.
Second.
By Councilman Overton, second by Ms. Love. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion, Harris. It's still up.
I think this is my last one, correcting a typo. There were a couple of digits that were omitted from an account number in error. It should have been 110-36350, but the ordinance read 11-3650. So we're, again, just correcting an account number that was...
Motion, Senator.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, ordinance number 02206-34, appropriating funds in the amount of $73,000 for parks and rec departments. Rachel and David Brown.
As we were working on the year-end ordinance a couple of weeks ago, trying to make sure everybody's budget was in good shape, we thought we had it all covered. But then we realized we have a few lines in parks and rec that need some attention. And then today, Mr. Brown added some more lines to it. So initially, it was $73,000 appropriated to some parks and golf accounts where they were, were overages. We've added some civic center and parks lines as well. And then also a revenue line where we did get some insurance recovery for part of one of these repairs. If Mr. Brown wants to talk about these more.
Yeah, this is just some light items that, this is gonna be over just the time. I know on the, the original was the gas. But then in our light items, we got some maintenance that's gotta be done at the civic center and the stormwater fee, it's listed there. This is just some of the lines that's, has gotta be adjusted to meet this year's budget.
Second.
Conversation, so, my conversation is, so instead of being 73,000, it's 172,000?
Correct.
Wow. Mayor, do we have any other departments that have this type of a change that you know of?
No, we have not. This is the first time I've seen this number, too. Yeah, that's stressful.
What was off on the stormwater fee? I mean, is that, isn't that set? I mean...
I mean, I have to say, most of our departments have always done a really good job of, you know, keeping track of their budget. If they see that something's gonna be way over, they'll, you know, be letting us know as time goes by. I know Don's been real concerned about the police department. But, you know, they're all kind of holding off on some things and waiting till the new budget year and, and making it work. So this is, you know, certainly unusual in department land, but...
Are you wanting to look this over some more, Mayor?
No, I mean, I don't, I, I mean, the money's not there. We're gonna be in trouble with the comp controller if they have spent it and don't have the funds to do whatever. I would be curious to know the particulars, like the contractual services. I mean, is that something that has to be done this year and...
When does something like this come up? I'm not familiar with how quickly or how long did we know there was such a gap?
Well, we thought about two months ago we was gonna be able to make it up on some of them. But it, it's just not, you know, it's just like the fuel. We had $35,000 in the budget, and it's already at 60,000. Because it, it just doubled. And then the chemicals at the pool, as far as operating. And then, like, the stormwater fee, it's already over three, it's gonna be over $3,000 at parks and the, what we put in the budget, we was...
So did it change this year? How did it?
That was the figure that we was giving at the first of the year to put in the budget.
Were you checked with engineering to make sure it's accurate and it's something?
That was the figure that we got from them at, at the beginning of the budget year. I don't know if something added on or what.
So you got one figure at the beginning of the budget year, but you're being billed a different one? Is that what you're saying?
They billed it by monthly.
Right.
What we did at the first of the year, we did that monthly thing that came up to what we thought was gonna be it. But I don't know if it's increased or they increase it, I don't, I don't know. It's a number that we don't control.
Now, they don't increase it, so you probably need to check on that. And so the, the, oh, shoot.
Well, if fuel's a biggest issue, a big issue, won't that be in all the other departments as well?
I would, I would think so. I would think so. I, I don't know their budgets. Well, I mean, you, you, you know, your vehicle maintenance and gas, you have no control over that. I mean, everybody's just went up, I'm sure. So there'll probably be more of this unless they've added in some other department line items, so... And that's everybody's budget, not just Parks Department. It's our personal budget, it's all going up on gas and stuff, so...
That's gotta change our budget big time.
And every department's gone up, too.
Yeah, that's right, that's what I'm saying.
What about the food? What does that mean?
Well, that's the food, what we have, the, the pool is just now opening up, and we done real good last fall, and we gonna do real good this spring. That will bring revenue in, that, that line item will. So, and the rest of it's just, it's just, everything has gone up so much on buying parks and stuff, just... And then, like, the other contract service, some of that is a cemetery. They've mowed it more than what we had projected in the past year because you just project, you know, they gonna mow it 30 times and it rains or it don't rain, or in the summer, they mow it more or whatever. That's some of that and just other stuff that threw out the park.
Okay, we have a motion. I, I didn't remember who. Who, who was the original motion?
County's got it.
Okay, any further conversation? Okay. Yeah, all in favor?
Uh.
Monthly financial reports for April.
My last item is monthly financial reports for April. Our revenue collections are coming along well. The general fund looks like it's a little slow, but a lot of that is grant dollars, and we haven't expended them yet, therefore we aren't getting them back yet. All of the accounts, with a few exceptions, are looking okay. And this was as of April. We did an amendment last week, or two weeks ago, that corrected some of these overages, or that look higher in percentage, not overages, but look higher in percentages. All the other funds are looking stable. Trey.
Thank you.
Oh, based on the adjustments or the pay scale, there will be a number of amendments for the 23 budget ordinance. As the mayor said, we've got that lumped in one line. I'll have to spread it out to all the different departments. So that will be coming next week. And included in that, there was an oversight, and I missed a permanent part-time position in engineering that will add about $50,000 in salary and benefits to the budget for them for next year. It was a person moving out of a full-time into a part-time. And as we were adjusting things and planning for the budget, that one got dropped through the cracks. So that will be included in the amendment where all the step plan is implemented. That will be at the June 7th.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
That concludes the agenda. Now we're open to other business. Anyone have anything they want to bring up?
I have two street closures that I need to bring to you guys. One is for June 16th, July 21st, August 18th, and September 15th. It's for the Third Thursday Night Main Concert Series. It closes Water Street from Main to Franklin and the Public Square from Main to Water from 6:30 PM. Whoa, 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 no. They close from 5:00 PM until 10:00 PM. And they have on here that, you know, there will be amplification from 6:30 until 9:00. It is signed by all the appropriate departments and all of the people on the square.
Motion, Senator.
Second. Is that the same as it always is as far as street closures?
By Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Love, Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Harris.
And this one is for June 3rd, July 1st, August 5th, and September 2nd. Also from downtown Gallatin, this is for their Friday events. They want to close just the L of the square, which is the Public Square from Water to Main Street, from 5:30 until 8:00 PM on those after-eathings. Again, you have your department head signatures and your impacted businesses.
Motion to approve? Any discuss, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any other business? Department heads. Are you there?
They're frozen in place. It's so cold in this room.
You sure you don't want to speak? We have plenty of time. We have the next motion. To adjourn?
I'll adjourn.
Thank you.